All right, so we have a motion come out of this exercise.
I move.
All right, motion made by Mr. Bishop, going second.
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 Second, from Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion there? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like aye. Let the record reflect, no action was taken. All right, we're gonna move on to Mr. Sullivan. I didn't see him here, but it's the annual membership dues for Lance Cooper.
I make the motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Morrison. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. Mr. Parker.
Come on down.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item we have is on the Inter Chapel Road Reconstruction Project. We recommend approval of payout number 11 to Site Masters Inc. in the amount of $452,977.46 and authority to issue the check.
I'm making the motion to pay them, and then I want some discussion.
Second. All right, motion made by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Discussion time.
Right. This is not the end of our relationship. We still are holding a closeout.
Yes. The amount of money. So, right now, we're in discussions on some quantities. Nothing on this payout is something that they say they won't, and we say, we're confident in the quantities on this payout. There's still about $177,000 worth of retainage being held out of the project, and so this is all, this is not the final payout. They've still got punchless stuff to do, and so there will be at least one more payout.
All right, and it's, how about the aprons? I know that's some of the-
Well, that's a big, I was getting a good many calls, and this is more, I guess, with Mike, because there's, we're handling it a little bit differently than we were a month or two ago. Mike, about how long do you think it'll be before we're completed with the aprons?
I'm trying to get the contractor out of my seat, so we don't interfere with our contract.
So, the county's gonna be doing the aprons and not the contractor?
So, the issue was that Site Masters has their own paving crews. They don't sub it out, and their paving crews were all somewhere on a big job. I'm not sure exactly where, and it was gonna be a long time before they could get in, and we certainly didn't want to delay, so we said, "We'll just push it down the road till they, and see where we are when they get closer to get through," and it appears, it appears that Site Masters is gonna be through before their paving company could get back in to do the paving, so.
Yeah, they were gonna be like the first November before they could get back. They would be through with the job before then, and we'll be in there. I'm hoping the next couple of weeks like that.
Was that gonna be deducted?
Yeah, so, that was, that was approved in here, but we never executed a contract change order with Site Masters.
I know, but it was, was that part of their contract to put those aprons on?
No, sir. It's, they, they, a small apron, but if you remember a few meetings back, we talked about adding aprons to go to the right way, basically go to the right way line.
Right.
And so that, that was never actually added in the contract by paperwork.
That's what I was questioning, yeah.
All right. All right, that's all I got.
All right.
Thank you.
Have we heard anything from vendors of Site Masters who have not been paid?
I haven't, we have not heard another word.
Okay.
All right, all in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. All right.
Item B, Mr. President, is on the Gun Road Improvements Phase One. We recommend approval of payout number one to Hemp Hill Construction Inc. in the amount of $252,261.56 and authority to issue that check.
I make motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. All right, Mr. Slate?
Yes, sir.
You wanna set all of these in one, or do you need-
Mr. President, if you will, for, for special reasons, I wanna take these separately, if you don't mind. So, let's take item A first, set public hearing September 29, 9:00 AM. Sherry Rory nuisance property at 337 Allison Drive, District One property.
Okay, I'll make motion set at vote here.
Second, by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Not, all in favor say aye. All opposed like
aye. All right.
Second item is to set a public hearing for the 29th at 9:00 AM for the Dennis and Loretta Bell nuisance property, 1131 Barker Road, District Four property. Steve?
Motion to, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Did you want to mention anything about this property in particular? This District Four? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would like to expedite it. We have had some problems, and people are really upset, and this, our process takes a little time. It's just the way it is, but I don't wanna take any more time than we have to.
Nuisance.
Yeah, but they also had some other problems, yeah. Yep.
Yeah, had an incident there.
I don't know, I don't know how we speed the clock up, but I'd like to get it to the court quickly.
Understood, understood.
Are you just gonna skip that on through and get it sent to court?
If we could. I don't know if we can.
Can you do without going to a nuisance hearing?
No, sir. We, we need to declare a nuisance here. So, setting this hearing for the 29th is the absolute fastest thing we can do.
Okay.
So, let's, let's go ahead, and I think Steve's made the motion to set it.
Motion, all right, second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? Not, all in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. All right.
So, that was why I wanted to take these separately, Mr. President. Item C is to set a public hearing for the 29th for the Stephen Scott Nichols nuisance property, District 516 Rock Hill Road, District Three.
I make the motion, set it.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. All right.
Gentlemen, the, the next item under my section of the agenda, item D, is a consideration of and potential action regarding the P.I.A.M. LLC request for tax exemption. This matter was tabled on September the 6th, and the notation indicates that we are now removing it from the table by acclamation of the board to consider this. I've noticed that Mr. Chris Gurus is here on behalf of the applicant, and so I'm gonna invite him to come forward to address the board. In the meantime, while Chris is coming, I'm, I'm gonna receive into the record and, and make a part of the minutes, the position statement of our tax assessor with respect to this application, and I wanted to indicate to the board what the tax assessor's numerical calculations indicate concerning this applicant. This is the Refuge Sheridan Hotel at the Refuge Conference Center, 2200 Refuge Boulevard at Flowood. The applicant is entitled to an exemption under Mississippi Code Section 57-10-255. There are a number of new jobs that have been created at this establishment. Seventy-one new jobs have been confirmed. The estimated annual payroll is $2.3 million. The improvement value, this relates only to the real property improvement values, $20,634,600. That valuation was derived at, by the tax assessor through the capable work of Mr. Rotten, who's here, with, with some back and forth with the applicant, and so this actually reflects a, a value that, that is favorable, is favorable to the applicant. I just wanted to make that clear. After some back and forth, we did receive the information that we indicated to you on the 6th we needed, which was an depreciation schedule for the personal property specifically, but we were provided by the applicant the required information. We have a personal property valuation established as of completion of $7.3 million. So, the total exemption value as of the date of your action here is $27,934,660. So, with that, Chris, do you mind stepping forward and just indicate to the board anything you wish to make them aware of?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the board's consideration, and at the end of the day, I know that there's been some question about, you know, why is this project unique compared to other hospitality projects and properties in the county, and I think y'all are well aware of, if I wanna say some for the public and others. This, this hotel project is probably two and a half to three times the investment of any other hotel facility in the county, and it took extraordinary efforts by the state, the city, the county, and others to make it a reality. It's on public property, located next to a public golf course. A portion of the facility is actually now publicly owned with the city's acquisition of the meeting space Conference Center, which y'all financially support. This project is doing a lot to keep Rankin County business in Rankin County from going to County Line Road and other, you know, Jackson facilities, and, and there's some conferences that are occurring here that would even go out of the market, you know, to the Mississippi Gulf Coast. It's attracting additional business into the market, which I think y'all recognize and is important. At the end of the day, the ramp-up period for this thing's gonna be a while till it gets to where its cash flow, and, and as part of the financing that was put in place through the Mississippi Business Finance Corporation, this type of project is eligible on the code citations that Mr. Slate referenced. So, we're just here today to respectfully ask the board's consideration of the 10-year tax exemption, and importantly, last month, the City of Flowood voted unanimously to support that request at the city level. So, that's, that's what's got us here today in front of you, and the last meeting the assessor's office needed some additional info, which, which Mr. Slate recognized that we had provided, and the assessor's office has found to be appropriate. So, that's what's got us here today, and respectfully request the board's consideration.
Hey, Chris, why are you up there? I know Craig mentioned 71 jobs. I mean, I mean, I've heard in the past that it's still understaffed. I mean, I mean, how many more positions are there available there at the hotel?
That, that's a question, Mr. County, that I can't answer. I will tell you that as a side job, my brother and I are in the hospitality business. We've, we've got several restaurants, and lord have mercy, it's in the service sector, it's, it's particularly difficult right now to get enough folks to show up. My personal experience, and, and I'll get with Mr. Yeager and ask that question and report back to you, 'cause I don't know the answer, but we're having a heck of a time. We'll have people come in, interview, we'll hire five people, and two of them will show up to work. Just, just incredible struggle right now.
All right. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's definitely a, a project that we wanted to see happen, and it's great for Rankin County, so.
It is.
Look forward to many years gonna be in there thriving.
Y'all have any more questions to Mr. Gurus?
No.
Thank you. Yes, sir. So, gentlemen, under 57-10-255, which is the Code Section that you're authorized to provide the exemption, you have total discretion. This board can, in its discretion, either grant or deny the application. It can set conditions. It can, it can make decisions with respect to what portions, how much, how long, and other conditions as such, and so I, I will walk you through a couple of thoughts that occur. Typically, what this board has done in granting exemptions of this type, I'm not gonna suggest that we have granted very many under the MDA protocol that we're here today on, but they're no different than any other tax exemption where you have full discretion. This board has shown a propensity to grant a five-year exemption with the option to renew that five-year exemption thereafter for a total of 10, and so that's an option that the board can choose. You've done that on a number of occasions where you have split the exemption up into two fives, with the second five being the responsibility of the applicant to come back and request the additional five. So, that's an option that you have, split it up like that. You've done that in the past, and this may be appropriate. Again, you guys are the decision-makers. Y'all decide. I'm just walking you through what your options are. Another option that you have is, is to simply to grant it and hold all of the portion that you're allowed and have authority and discretion to grant. You cannot exempt the school taxes, because by law, those cannot be exempted, so the applicant's gonna pay the school portion regardless of what you do here today. So, when you're, you're only talking about that portion that you have the responsibility over, okay? You, you have the option then, and you have done this previously, to segregate an aspect of your millage to recognize that, that the applicant should be responsible for helping to take care of roads and bridges, and so oftentimes, you will grant an exemption that excludes the road and bridge portion of your millage, but allows for all of the other millage to be exempt for that. That's an option that you have. You have the option, should you choose to do it, and you've done it previously with other applicants, to condition the, the granting of the exemption such that if it cannot be assigned, in other words, if the applicant is granted an exemption, that exemption, that exemption is not assignable to any other third party. So, if the, if the, if the property is sold during dependency of the exemption, the exemption goes away, and so you would have the ability to, to place that condition on your granting of the exemption. A fourth and final condition that we have used in the past with some success, and, and I wanna apologize to all applicants now and in the future, they can blame Siemens Manufacturing for this condition, and that is that the applicant, if granted the exemption, is waiving their right to object to the tax assessor's valuation of all assets, and that, that waiver would be in place during the pendency of the exemption and for a period of five years after the termination of the exemption, whenever that occurs. Again, they can thank Siemens for us having to do that. We're, no, gone are the days, as long as I'm helping you guys, y'all allow me to help you. Gone are the days where we move out of an exemption period only to have the, the beneficiary of that exemption turn around and sue us after an objection to valuation when the exemption expired. So, I, I would suggest to you that you consider those for additional conditions to the exemption of 5-5. 5-5 with the responsibility being that a renewal comes from the applicant before the end of the fifth year of your initial exemption period, okay? I would ask that you make it nonassignable. I would ask that you include the prohibitions on objections to value. Did I mention assignment? Does it say assignment? And, and that, and that you consider whether or not-
Or at least that they can't-
Correct. No, no assignment, no assignment. No, no transfer, assignment, or otherwise. Now, let me, let me hasten to add one thing, and I'm doing this for Chris, so that he understands. We would not consider it to be an assignment if the entity, P.I.A.M. LLC, chooses to reorganize in some other entity, but the ownership structure remains the same. That's not an assignment. But if P.I.A.M. LLC decides we're out of this, and we're selling to a third party, holiday end, there you go. Exemption's gone. Okay? Everybody clear about that? All right. And I, I would like for you to consider, what, what portion, if any, of your millage would you exclude from the exemption? Would you exclude Road and Bridge? Okay, so there, there's your options.
Well, I would like to keep the, rather than going five years, I would suggest doing three after the end of the exemption. Just my thought. So, you wanna do a 3-7?
Is that what we're saying, Judge? They have a total of 10 that's available to them. Give them three now.
No, I was talking about the, the-
He's talking about after, oh.
Appealing the-
Objection, the objection period. Rather than five years, make it, make it a three-year waiver.
Yeah, I'm good with the 5-5. I, I like that idea.
That's what I would like. I, I like that, what you suggested. With every bit of language, it all fits. 5-5, Road and Bridge out, and schools out, and then no objecting or even discussion. I guess they can discuss, but not, not too-
They can formally object, and when I say formally object, they bring forward documentation in August. We've done this. They have until, I believe, August 1st is the deadline. They, they formally file an objection to the valuation made by the tax assessor. They would be waiving that. They're eligible for the exemption period, and they waive the right to object for that period that I just described. Jay is saying shorten that.
No.
He, he wants to shorten the objection period.
He wants it shortened down to three years.
He's wanting to shorten it to three.
He said he was happy with 5-5.
Uh, objection to the assessment.
Oh.
Do it in five, do it in three.
Assessment period for three years.
I don't care. 5-5 and three years. What is it, 220, 221?
38, 39. Yeah, so.
And exclude the road and bridge, and, and then if they sell to a third party, that it doesn't carry-
The exemption disappears if there's an assignment or transfer of the facility, the property. Y'all good with that?
All right, I'm on three.
I can work with Ms. Jessica to taper that up as a granting of the exemption with those conditions. Chris, we can get Mr. Gurus the, an accurate reflection of what that means from an assessment. Off the top of my head, I don't know what our road bridge is. I think it's 10 mils.
It's 9.02.
9.02.
Chris, what do you think about that?
I appreciate the consideration. Would like it a little bit cleaner, but I can't argue with what the board can deliberate here. And, you know, there are times that, you know, we're, we're looking out now, 11, 12, 13 years, or I guess if, if, Mr. Slate, if we came back in year five to say we asked for an extension and we get it, great. If we don't, that protest period is the next three years.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
The assessor's office has been great to work with. We sat down and said, hey, we think that this is a lie.
Yes.
So, we're happy with what you're proposing here.
And the, and the, the objection condition can be waived by a subsequent board at the end of the five years. You come back and you say, "We want an additional five years, and we want you to remove the objection restriction." That board can-
I can be considered.
-take that up and rehear those conditions at that time. So, your five-year deal that I'm talking, you're, you're granting them a five year. That, that second five-year period is completely conditional. It's conditional on them asking, and it's conditional on that board granting.
Whether they'll leave it the same or change it.
That's correct. Everybody clear with that? Okay. I would need a motion to grant the exemption with the conditions as stated, you know, to the record.
All right, motion made, made by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? Not, all in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. Motion carried.
Thank y'all very much.
Gentlemen, item E is a very lengthy by design agenda item. I'm happy to read the whole thing into the record, but let me just short-circuit it by telling you, this is an agenda item that allows us to complete your ARPA application for state matching funds through the MDEQ application portal, and it is packed with all of the authorizations that your team believes are going to be necessary for us to be able to complete that application.
So, the day's the day, right?
Yes, sir. The, the, the day is September 30, which is the day that the portal closes.
I thought our goal was today.
Yes, our, our, our goal was today, and we do not have everything done for today.
What are we lacking on, on whose side?
Finishing, uh, well, what we're doing here is there's probably two or three items that are more strength administrative in nature that our folks are pulling together that are a part of the application process. I'll give you, for instance, somebody stuck in the statute that was passed by the legislature that counties have to be, all applicants have to be members of Mississippi 811, Inc. This is just an example of what we're dealing with. That is, that's a private entity, by the way. It's a, it's kind of a quasi-public entity, but good old legislature. Somebody got to somebody and inserted that language in there. Counties, by operation of the bylaws of Mississippi 811, Inc., counties cannot be members of Mississippi 811, Inc., because you do not have any utility infrastructure. You're not eligible to be a member, but the law requires you to be a member. So-
You gotta be a member anyway.
Yes. So, somebody, finally, the light bulb went off about this time last week, right at the end of last week, and a meeting was called by DEQ with Mississippi 811, and the Lieutenant Governor had to get involved, and as of yesterday, Mississippi 811 opened up a, an application process now that will allow counties to be members of Mississippi 811 by affiliate membership. That's one example of what we're dealing with to get our application finalized.
So hard.
We're not yet members of Mississippi 811. Even if I told you right now that we had everything else ready to go, we are not members of Mississippi 811, and we cannot submit our, we cannot submit our application.
They want you to use the money and have the money, but they're gonna make it impossible for you to try to get it.
It's, uh, it's, it's, it's clearly frustrating for everybody, us, more, as much or more than you guys, but that's an example.
What about, what about as far as the engineering services and everything? Not engineering services in quotes, but the overall engineering services? Not the title name of engineering services. I said that right, didn't I?
Just say the engineer.
The services provided by engineers, are we missing anything from those areas?
So, I, I, I want to, I wanna give credit where credit's due. I think our construction guys have done everything humanly possible to have their part of the deal done. I don't wanna put words in Tim's mouth, but our, our construction side has gotten all of the projects that they have responsibility for to a point of design where the application can, can proceed. However, there are still some stormwater-related information, there's still stormwater-related information for individual projects that has not yet been completed. Am I right?
Well said.
All right. So, we, we do have progress on a-
Have you put them on a deadline?
Not, not, well, they, we're all on a deadline. We have to have this done by the 30th, or we won't have an application. So, there is a deadline, Daniel.
Is there any repercussions yet? The deadline's not-
It's the 20th.
Yeah, here's the repercussion. If, if we don't get them in, if we don't get matching funds, and basically this board is left with the prospect of half of your ARPA projects having to be reconsidered. There's your deadline. There's your repercussions.
It may be a penalty.
No, 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 no. We will have a second round. Nobody, nobody is under the impression that we won't have a second round. Probably six months before it opens back up. All right, let's, let's go through that one more time. Let's go through, let's go through that. This is important. Thank you for raising that, Jake. This is a first round. It's very important. We've all agreed, I think, we will get as much as many of our 29 delineated ARPA projects stood up for application purposes and get them submitted. We've all agreed, we want a wholesale introduction of all of those projects, all $50 million worth of projects we want to submit in round one. Okay? That is, that is the target. Whatever cannot get funded in round one, and your team is still working through, what is the best way to do that? Do we do it as one application? Do we do it as two applications going in simultaneously? Probably. But we want all of our projects submitted for round one consideration. We don't know what would get funded out of round one, but there's a specific reason why we wanna do that, and that's because the way the statute was drawn, the carve-out for stormwater projects, if you read the language of the statute carefully, it looks like the carve-out specific for stormwater only applies to round one. And that's why we are desperate to make sure we get as much packed into round one app as we possibly can, so that we have the best chance of qualifying for state matching funds for the whole thing. All right? So, that's the goal. Daniel, here's why it's hard to answer your question. We know that because of the core implications, because of the permit complexities that we have for about five or six of our projects, two of which are the highest problem, but because of that permit impediment, those projects are likely to get less points in the review. We will not be able to certify that we have all required permits for a number of those projects, so we're going to pull out the projects where we have permits, and those are gonna go in as a group. The other five or so are gonna have to go in and hope against hope that we still score well enough for the points that we can get to be able to qualify for that first round stormwater money. All right? So, that, that's just the reality that we're dealing with.
Yeah, and we, I think we talked about pulling all that stuff out, so I think we've had that. I'm with you on that.
Yeah.
But all of those that are pulled out should make the 29 September deadline.
Absolutely. Yes.
They should.
Everyone agrees we need to get them all in, even if we're sending in, you remember the old days? Well, y'all didn't, none of y'all went to law school, but literally-
Word? My word? He went, he went to law school. He was at law school at one point, I think. He didn't make it, but he was there.
Many, many days, I filled up what are called blue books, answering law school questions. Generally, it was one question for the entire semester. That was- That was how law school exams worked. And you knew, you wrote and filled up that book, even if on the last page, you were scribbling, drawing. Even if we have to submit an application for an ARPA project that is a drawing and a scribble and a, "We want to put a bridge here" kind of applicant. We are going to submit something.
So, so, so take me down the word of the Mill Creek stuff. Because now I'm fixing to go over the one-year mark. And I think in, in June, we submitted that stuff to the Corps. And we thought, nah, I just, I don't want, I don't want any good news.
Good news or bad news?
I want all bad news. The, in June, we submitted, sometime around that middle of June timeframe, that we thought would be a sixty to ninety-day deal. And now we're at the end of that. Now, I'm really touching October. We won't see each other again and hold hands until October.
That's right.
So, just break it to me gently now so I can just slowly absorb it in the moment.
Quick reminder, our, our timeframe got hand-grenaded by the alligator snapping turtle.
Correct.
Remember that? So, I am going to give you some good news and that's this. The Mississippi Wildlife Foundation, which is one of the two entities that we can utilize, has issued a response back to Hayden, I think it came yesterday, indicating no substantial impact to any endangered species. That's great news. Okay, that's, that's great news. But, but it's, what, what we've been in, Daniel, is this, they hit pause. You hit pause. And so, the, the clock for permit review hasn't been running.
Of course it hasn't.
Right. So, now that we have an answer, we can restart the clock for the permit review. My understanding, as of yesterday afternoon, talking with Hayden, they have options available, and this is specific to Mill Creek, but it also applies to Oak Grove. So, Jay, I want you to hear this.
Yeah, because it's the same turtles.
It's exactly the same situation, just different engineers involved, okay? But there, there is a possibility that we will be able to introduce some fairly routine, I would say, alterations to the plan that will remove the responsibility or the requirement to get a four-four.
Good. It should be that way anyhow.
Without doubt, it should be that way.
No question. Now, whether we can get everything lined up just right so that the Corps says, oh, you don't need a four-four for that. Whether we can get that, and by the way, they are the ones who are telling us how to do that.
Yeah, so, so how long does that process take? A year?
I, I have no idea.
I mean, start with a start of a year. I mean...
It's, it's whatever the Corps comes up with, with their timeline. But, but it's, it's, it's shorter than getting a four-four.
Which we don't know that timeframe either.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, it's just all fictitious.
So, if we can get them these revisions, which my understanding is we are preparing that even today, if we can get that, those revisions to the project scope before them and they bless it and say, you fit under the nation law, you fit under the nation law. It's not that we don't get a permit, it's that we fit under that general permit that is provided for all political subdivision. If we can fit in there with our projects, then we can answer the question on the DEQ application. We have all permits. And it moves Mill Creek from sketchy, probably not going to score well, into the group that is, should score pretty well. I hope you understand, this permit thing...
Yeah, I, I do. And, and, and I guess that's, that's part of it. But part of the scoring process on this section of the creek doesn't matter.
No, 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 no. You're exactly right. This project's moving, that project's moving regardless.
The score could be whatever, positive, negative. They don't have any, any bid on the whole thing. But the remaining portion of it does. I, I agree with you on that. I guess my thing is, 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 this is the thing that the general public doesn't understand. I don't understand it, is that the timeframes of this stuff are absolutely ridiculous.
That's right.
And it's an absolute, it's, it's, it's a terrible situation on that. So...
I agree.
There's no, there's no good answer to it, but I would like, if we could, um, get another update in January of twenty-three. Or just, I'll give you six more months or five months or three months. Just sometime, I'm, I'm not going to ask it again. Until January of twenty-three.
Okay.
And I'm gonna put that on as a reminder. Just where we at on Mill Creek. Nothing's gonna be done. Nothing's gonna be done is what I'm trying to tell you. But I'm just gonna ask it in January twenty, so Timmy, put this down on your thing. In January of twenty-three, I'm gonna ask you about Mill Creek. And get with word and come up with just some great BS. You know, I mean, just come up with something, just to make me feel better and, and I'll know, you know, so... If you don't mind. And I'd like some pictures. I, I feel, I do, I totally do.
We'll be under contract by then, so, we're gonna be bidding it out.
I don't know. It's crazy. Where, where, you didn't know this point right here?
I am. I, I was just benchmarking where we are and as far as his application goes. He tells me that he just got some hydraulic for Amanda and Oak Grove this week and, uh, and still hasn't received anything on, uh, Terra Road and Reservoir East.
So, where would, where would, where would he get, where would he get that from?
That's, that's coming from where?
So, that, that was gonna be the help I'm hoping on all of it. What about you, Tim? Where are you sitting?
We're somewhat in the same boat. We're moving forward. We've gotten some bridge information, but we're waiting on some information on the others. But we're at a point, Jay, on ours where for the application process, we're putting something together. Now, October one, we may have to make some modifications to what our plans look like. But, you know, to prepare a cost assessment and meet the September thirtieth deadline, we had to make some, we just had to make some, we...
That's what I'm gonna have to...
Jay, I actually had a conversation with Greg this morning on the way over here. Uh, and, and they're, they're doing the same thing we're doing. They take them as far as they can, waiting up until the last minute to say, I'm getting it out or I'm not. And here's what I'm gonna do if I get it, here's what I'm gonna do if I don't get it. And we're gonna have, we're gonna have a set of plans and specs to submit before September thirtieth when all the products are coming.
Y'all get that?
Yes, sir.
Where people aren't pointing at each other. That's what, I mean, until we do them...
I think what, what they, I just want to know where are we now? Because this was our day, the day was the day we were supposed to be ready. And so, but we're gonna be ready come by the thirtieth.
We, we are going to submit an application for matching funds for all twenty-nine of your defined projects. We are going to, even if some of those is a hand drawing from the board lawyer.
Yeah.
Yeah, but is that gonna make it very far through the process?
Probably not, but it's gonna be in the process, Steve, where if we score four points, there may not be any competition. There may not be another stormwater project in there.
I mean, I, I would have liked to have had the best reports.
We're gonna have a, probably a change order coming. Well, I don't know. By the time we get ready to bid it, it'll be... Whenever on these applications, if we put the dollar amounts down, each one, I guess we are, huh?
Yes.
Do you think in your next term, you will complete it?
I mean, we, we know anything on the twenty-nine.
Sure, man. Yeah. You can today.
I expect, I expect to be getting with each of you guys.
Shame on you.
Can I, can I get y'all to give me authorization on item E? And I want you to add one thing and I'll get with Ms. Jess, make sure this gets included. And I'm, I'm struggling here to get the language right. But, but there are some, there are some policies that we need to consider that relate to how we handle grant funding. By the way, the monies that are the matching funds, if we are awarded matching funds, those will be grant funds. And so, we've got to have a procedure that we follow internally as to how we handle grant funds. We've never formally put that in a policy. And so, I need you guys to authorize a, the establishment of and the approval of a policy for handling grant funds of this nature. These are federal funds, they're coming through the state. And so, we, we've got a po, a proposed policy that's very basic. Doesn't put any extra work on how we normally handle this. It just puts it in writing. So, I, I need one additional item in here that is to, the authority to adopt all required policies and procedures that are a part of the ARPA matching fund application. That needs to be added to this item.
Mike wants to add this agenda.
Alright, do I have a second? Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed like sign.
I have a meeting with the addition.
Yes, sir.
Motion made by Morrison, uh, second on, on Mr. Cross. All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign.
Hey, Slate, you understand my frustration.
Absolutely.
Because, because we got, when did we receive the first ARPA check? May of...
Twenty-one.
Right. So, here we are going into the holiday season, which everybody stops, right? So, there really won't be any more work done officially on anything until February-ish timeframe, right? So, here we are going in almost two years of a three-year window of money, which I know you get extensions and stuff like that, right, because the project has supposedly started. We ain't done nothing. Yeah.
Well, we've done a lot of work, done studies.
We've done some studies and we laid hands on it and we all felt good about it. I mean, we've done all kinds of stuff like that. We ain't done anything, right? So, now, we spent some money, all the ARPA money, the way we needed to immediately, which is the point of it all. But the project side of this deal, it's all just been sitting around and look like a calf looking at the moon. You know what I mean? You've seen calves look at the moon, right? They look, they know something's out there, it's just kind of a, a far stare and they see it. That's kind of what we've done on this deal.
We did get some river raft brought in.
But we forced ourselves into that, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure we didn't jump the gun on that.
So, so, so that, that's the frustration side of this whole piece, so...
I get it. Thank you, Daniel.
Alright.
Sorry, buddy.
Mr. Higgins.
That's the way it is. I can, you want me to add to it? The next one, next one. I mean, it's, it's frustrating. And how you explain to people, because it sounds like you're, you're lying. Sally is being political.
Alright, Keith.
Alright.
Good morning, gentlemen.
The, the county has received this year's fire rebate funds from the Department of Insurance. So, we're asking for authority to issue checks for the, uh, annual twenty-twenty-two tax levy allocation funds for each fire department contingent upon receipt of information from those fire departments.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Additional business.
I got, oh, go ahead, Mike. Oh, the good news I've got is, we got some money to do some work with. Uh, I just need some direction. Looks like we started with about eleven million in this rescue and ARPA or Civil Link money altogether. We're down to about nine point four. I need some direction from the board, how y'all want to address this money and...
Now, is that the money for the Civil Link?
Don't you, because you got your this year's, I guess we spend this year's money all...
I did not include my regular budget in this.
As I say, why don't you include your regular budget in there?
Well, because what I'm, I'll get into that, but I don't, go ahead and get into that. What I'm trying to do is figure out what kind of product y'all want to put out with this money? What direction, y'all want to go with pavement preservation, y'all want to go a hundred percent asphalt? How, what direction you want to do? I want to put together some bid projects, Jake, with this money because we done got caught twice this year. Asphalt bids got pulled out because of money. Right now, it looks like micro people fixing to pull out and they're halfway done with us because they got bid...
Why you need to pull out?
Moving to a note, moving out, not completing their projects.
Why? Because they got other bid jobs that they're gonna take penalties on and there's no penalty in walking away from us.
Well, I mean, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna get rank and road, they're gonna, they're gonna get rank and road done before they leave. Huh?
Nope.
They're not gonna put micro over it?
They're pulling out. Matter of fact, they're probably gonna...
What are we gonna do about that?
They're pulling out of subdivision in my district. Subdivision, middle subdivision.
I don't think we got any teeth in anything. That's...
Well, I'm asking you this. Can you come back over with a, a, a...
Well, we're gonna end up having to go back and fog seal all these roads that we had set up for micro.
Well, what about going with a thin, uh, ultra-thin?
I, I don't have, I don't have a bid for anything here. That was my only thing. When the asphalt bids pulled out, I mean, we're buying FOB on state contract right now because everybody's gonna pull everything.
Okay, I mean, why can't you take subdivision, rank the road, whatever, and go, okay, this is it. I want bids to be mi, uh, ultra-thin on there.
I, I, I can't. But what you getting into with the ultra-thin, you're just, it's like the micro. You're getting into seasonal weather. So, you, I mean, you need, you need certain temperatures to do certain things with. Micro, you need, I mean, you're pushing it some days this week, you should be, we've just risen so much.
Ultra-thin, what, what, what do you need? We got warm weather coming up.
I mean, sixty and rising. I mean, you need some ninety, ninety, you need ninety-degree days.
The problem is, is getting, getting somebody out there to bid it and get it done before it gets gone.
The problem is, the time we bid a project right now, Jerry, we'll be past, gone, we'll be, if we started today asphalt, every five, but today, we'd be...
Well, we gotta do something to cover that though for them.
Oh, no doubt.
What he's talking about.
If we had our own asphalt plant, that'd be perks.
Hey, you tried.
But anyway...
Fog seal, yeah, well, I mean...
So, I reckon what I'm reaching to is, is what I would like to do, me and Tim's talked about this. I'd like to take a portion of our money, uh, especially this rescue and ARPA and Civil Link money and put it out for bids that have teeth in it. I know it's gonna cost us just a little bit more, but we got start times, we got deadlines, nobody walks off from us. I want to do something. I'm getting too many calls with unsatisfied people. And every time you look back and it's not us, it's people we've hired to do the work. And folks can just quit now and go away and there's nothing you can do about it.
Oh, I was trying to say, I mean, the way our commodity is...
We got a mess that me and you gotta look at. Because they showed up with not enough people. They told the homeowners that their work was not, uh, crafty or that because they were short some employees.
What kind of work was it?
They spattered chip seal, tar. They slung tar all up on the curb and the sidewalks because the guy's supposed to hold the board over here, we're not here today. And that...
I'm not laughing at this.
How do you know the people are gonna, are you gonna pour some new curbs or what, what do you? You know, and I gotta go out there.
But anyway, y'all...
And that's one they also left earlier.
Can I give you a few months of division while you're out there?
No, I don't, I got enough. So, I reckon what I'm asking for is direction of how to, how we're gonna allocate this money? How are we gonna... Do it with some teeth. Let's... How are we gonna divide it up, you know, I mean...
Oh, I get it all.
What do you mean divided up? Just before.
Jay's already allocated.
I'm bidding it out. I think he's talking about a thing.
I think he's all bidding it out.
Like how many projects it wants, yes.
I mean, we kind of need to know, we kind of need to know what you want.
Is this like on the Civil Link plan? Is this what you're talking about?
Well, this is gonna be some money that, I'm, I'm looking at Craig right here.
When we talk about dividing, we're talking about the method, the payment method. What's gonna be chip seal, what's gonna be fog seal, what's gonna be slurry?
I'm good with your plan. I don't, I'm not...
The Civil Link plan?
What plan? Well, I guess the Civil Link. That's what we've been using in my district. And unless some road is falling apart, then he gets to it and he can't say use that method, he's gotta use another one, we're using the plan. I haven't...
Why don't you do this? Why don't you just come up with a list of roads that need to be done and what, let us know what treatment it needs to be and then we can decide where, how we wanna go about bidding it out. Should he refer to the road plan and use the, I'm sorry, the, the Civil Link and use the priorities that are established in the Civil Link plan to bring you the list?
Not some of that, because some of that's outdated.
Well, if it is, you can make the corrections.
They wrote it last year, didn't they?
Yeah, he can use, he can use whatever plan he wants to bring us a list and we can make the changes.
We can change it, so we can make the final decision.
You got it, Mike?
Yeah. But I mean, my, my thing is, and the reason I didn't include my budget in this, Jake, is because we're still gonna do our commodity bids that we've always done. And I was just kind of setting my budget to the side that where we had flexibility to use that money with commodity bids if we needed to. You see what I'm saying?
No, I don't. I don't understand.
So, what I was basically saying is, it's gonna be a nine, just, just using the number, nine point five million dollars worth of work out.
Right.
Alright, then I was gonna say, my other road plan, my regular budget plan, to use in commodity bids if we needed to. We'll have commodity bids. So, instead of putting everything we've got in one bid basket, we would have the flexibility, if a road like Steve said come apart, we can call a contractor, go over there and pave it.
You're looking still within this year. You're looking still within this year, you know, at most two years, so, I mean, I, I, I don't understand the difference.
It's all the same, all gonna be, money's money, gonna be all the same thing, I'm saying.
I just think you'll get more bang for your buck, and we'll get it turned out quicker than the commodity, like what you're doing right now. We got commodity bid, and he's picking up and leaving, going Wayne County, so.
That's what I'm saying, he's picking up and leaving, we lost our asphalt bids, 'cause we didn't have enough teeth to hold them to the contract.
Well, we put those, obviously, we put those annual bids out, you're fixing to get tough on the contracts, right?
We can try, here's the thing, uh, if you, if you tell them on the front end what the terms and conditions are.
Yeah, price goes up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Price goes up.
Bids go through the roof, so you pay board on the front end or the back end, which one? I still like the idea of doing one, it would be nice to know, if we could do two that were very similar in, in, in scope, and do one with restrictions, timeline, and the other without, so we can see exactly how much more we gonna pay. Right, and, and, and we do that, we, we don't do that process of describing at the bid stage, Jay, we do it at the PO issuance stage. So, we'll put timeframes on the PO, this PO is open for sixty days.
That's fine.
Right? So, it's not in the bid pack, we control that through the PO, and that allows us, if we got the option of a, a primary and a secondary, and we tell the primary, you got sixty-day open PO on this, otherwise, we move to nu, uh, number B.
But it doesn't mean that number A is out completely.
Doesn't mean A is out.
He done.
He's out on that job.
Right, well, yeah, well, certainly.
But, but you, you are stuck for a period of the open PO, before you can move to B.
If you gotta be, the problem is, the problem is.
You don't, dealing with it. I, I, it's the most workable solution that I can see, otherwise, you're gonna impact your bid crisis. Well, that's what I'm saying, we do it both ways, we actually see how much it is gonna impact us, but. We, we can certainly.
I feel like.
At some point, we need to tell these bidders, though, that we intend to put timelines on everything. I, I don't have a problem with that, as long as the board understands that when you tell them they're gonna be conditions like that on the front end. Yeah.
Price goes up, price goes up.
I'm telling you, look, at, at.
I don't blame him.
In fact, they, I, I don't wanna pick on any particular vendor, but, but we have vendors in this road department who literally use the county as filler. Right. We are their filler.
Oh, that's all of them, all of them would do that, that's, that's not one, that's all of them.
On the front end, you need to understand, the pricing that you get really represents that they're gonna use the county work to fill in the gaps of the work. Which is okay, as long as we get it done.
That's the problem, we not getting it done, and that always leads back to what, I see, where we go.
This happened, this happened about three years ago.
Can you go with asphalt plant plan?
Yeah, we have one. While we're on this issue.
Yes, sir.
Let's talk about something with a better ending, Andrew Chapel.
There you go, man.
I wanna have a ribbon cutting. And, what, two weeks, three weeks?
You better get them later.
I don't know, about two weeks, huh?
Well, three weeks, four weeks, some, I mean, I don't want it to be next year, I want it to be.
No, I think we, no, I think you're right, we do it easily, this year.
I was thinking first of October.
Not in the middle of October, I'm tired of it.
The price falls down, and the strikes.
I would say, I would say, you know, well, whenever you get ready, I mean, but we probably completed through by the first of November, so, if you wanted to.
Wait till the first of November.
If you want to wait till then, but I mean, it is, right, I mean, it's got.
That's still a good weather, Steve.
I mean, it's, it's, it's often, it's often to full traffic right now, so whatever you wanna do.
Signs are down.
Signs are down.
All right, then, let's look at calendars, and try somewhere into October, first of November, and Chuck, can you help us if we can schedule with you to be there, and give us a good spot, and paper, and get the people that live on the road, their brother to show up, maybe have a cup of coffee or something, I don't know. But, uh, anyhow, they're, the people, every one of them, no matter how much they have complained or whatever, now are saying, we have a wonderful road.
That's awesome.
Great road, and, uh, I'm gonna say something like a Tuesday or Thursday, ten o'clock in the morning, that's something, look at that counter, make it, that, you, Chuck, you think, are those good days, bad days?
Something other comes up.
Okay.
I should be able to do that.
Okay.
Well, we're trying, I mean, we're trying to work on punch lists right now, Steve, so much where we at on that.
Why are you up there? And, um, I want the board to sort of give them, uh, Tim approval to do, I got Greenfield Circle, which runs behind, um, Greenfield Station, and it's over seven hundred houses in there. And, uh, on occasions, there are wrecks out there on four sixty-eight at the entrance, 'cause there's so much traffic leaving that. And we do have the, the county made the developer put in an emergency exit on the back, but it's gated. And, um, the reason it's being gated is 'cause Greenfield Circle is just not a, I mean, it's a county road, but it's not twenty-foot wide in places and twenty-one foot wide. I want Tim to be able to go out there and get it surveyed and see where the property line, the county property line is, and maybe do some kind of improvement on Greenfield Circle.
An improvement?
Well, move the ditches, it's no, it's no shoulders on the road, it's asphalt, asphalt.
Not a road wide in there.
But no reconstruction.
It won't be a reconstruction project, what this project would consist of, if it goes following.
Only grubbing and moving the ditches back.
Would be grubbing, getting the full sixty-foot of right way, I'm looking at Craig. Kinda walk me through this, it'd be grubbing the trees, basically pushing the ditches back and re-aspauling the road. I think there's two, two heels that we looked at, that we would take two or three foot out of, and they're small heels that would just kept for site distance where people live, or leave the curves in.
We don't wanna make it a speedway.
We don't wanna make it a straight road, we wanna keep it a low-speed traffic, but we wanna get shoulders on the road, road does not have.
The hills out of the road, that means you're taking an old road out there.
Can you submit this from CMP?
We're talking fifty-foot, Jerry, this is a hill, a hundred, hundred.
Taking an old road out there, yeah.
It's not.
If it went to CMPD, the, we would have to address more of the horizontal and vertical alignment of it, getting qualified.
It's gotta be state aid.
Right.
It's gotta be a more high-speed.
It's not a state aid road, right?
Mm-mm.
This is not a reconstruction like what we do on Andrew Chapel.
But that would free up some of the traffic, if there were ever emergency, of course, some of the residents in there would probably enter and exit off of Greenfield Circle, and if there ever wrecked.
How long is that road?
Greenfield Circle, probably about two and a half miles.
Two and a half. Two and a half miles.
That'd be a project.
Yeah, I might just do it in phases, I mean.
The asphalt is, is, is nothing compared to what Andrew Chapel was.
Yeah.
The asphalt was good, so it's really just.
Right.
Widen the ditches and put shoulders on the road.
You're talking about a chunk of money, though.
You still talking about a couple million dollars.
We just did two million dollars last meeting.
I just, we, we don't know what it's gonna cost, that's why I want to get approval, let Tim look at it.
Project. So, I think where we are is to establish the right of way. Well, the one where they get the bid, came in, one point eight, something million over.
It's too many, it's too, too many to do that one.
That was state aid.
He standards the right of way.
Still armonizing.
Right, so, the right of way, you get that, you get that clear, 'cause I, I suspect Greenfield Circle's gonna be one of those roads that was a handshake deal a long time ago, probably has a prescriptive easement, prescriptive right of way, not a dedicated right of way. Figure out what we need on the right of way piece, and then get y'all a cost estimate, that's what Brad's asking for, authority to do this into a.
Look at it and see.
Cost development standpoint.
Are y'all good with that? Just giving it, Tim authority to get a cost estimate on, or what it would cost?
I don't even know.
Yeah, yeah.
Then come back.
That's what we're looking at.
All right, we don't have to have them.
Yeah, we do need a motion to add that.
We'll do a little bit of survey.
I'm making a motion to add this to the agenda, give Tim authority to go out and survey and look at Greenfield Circle.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross, any further discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm making a motion now to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross, any discussion, all in favor, say aye. All right, all opposed, like sign. All right.
All right, entertain a motion to, well, not entertain anything, I'm making a motion to recess until twenty-nine September.
Yeah, darling, well, I got something, two minutes, two minutes.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
It's doubling up today, you got, Brad texted me, said, get it in, I was like, all right, I got it in, done.